Start us. The meeting will come to order. The time is now 5:30 on Monday, March 20th, 2023. The regular monthly meeting of the District of Columbia Commission on the Arts and Humanities. My name is Reggie Van Lee, Chairperson of the Commission. I am an African American wearing a gray suit and a dark gray turtleneck. I'll now call the roll. When you hear your name, please answer present. Stacy Lee Banks. Cora Masses Berry. Maggie Fitzpatrick.
Present.
Juanice Floyd. Natalie Hopkinson. Kimber Minkiti. Is that Natalie?
Yes, that's me. Natalie's here.
Did you just mute yourself?
Yeah, the audio went out on our end.
Yeah, can't hear anything.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Very good. So I'm going to go back just to be safe. Stacy. Cora. Maggie.
Present.
Juanice. Natalie.
Present.
Kimber.
Present.
Mariah. Carla.
Present.
Hector.
Present.
Gretchen.
Present.
And myself. A quorum is present. This is a meeting of a public body held in open session in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. Notice of the meeting was posted on the Commission's website, vcrts.dc.gov, and on the D.C. Office of Open Governments Central Meetings Calendar. The meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format. A number of us are at the Commission's Office Building in Washington, DC, at 200 I Street Southeast, and a few are joining remotely using the Cisco Webex Virtual Meeting Platform. The meeting is being livestreamed to the Commission's YouTube channel, and electronic recording of the meeting will be available for viewing online following the conclusion.
Can't hear.
We're losing Reggie. We keep losing audio.
Can't hear.
You're muted again.
Can't hear you anymore.
Can you hear me? Can you hear now?
Yes.
Good, sorry. I will start over the land acknowledgement. And apologies for our ongoing technology problems. I will now read the land acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will. Some were drawn to leave their distant homes in hope of a better life, and some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We stand on the ancestral lands of the Koc-Tank and the Piscataway people. We pay respects to the elders past and present. Please take a moment to consider the many legacies of violence, displacement, migration, and settlement that bring us together here today. And please join us in uncovering such truths at any and all public events, and use such truths to guide the legacy of the Arts Commission. Is there an objection to the agenda those briefs see circulated? Here in no objection, the agenda stands as adopted. I welcome everyone. These are exciting times for us. We have an interesting agenda before us, and we have a visitor who will soon no longer be a visitor. Our nominated executive director is here with us, and we hope by the end of this month to have that process completed and he can come on full time. So we welcome you, Erin Myers, to our commission meeting. Tonight, we are joined by representatives from Ex-Pats Theater. As many of you know for some time now, we begin each of our meetings seeing the artists and seeing the art that we support here to remind us of why we're here as opposed to the usual things we have to do in these commission meetings. So Ex-Pats Theater was founded in 2019 by Karen Rosnitzek. Rosnitzek, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly.
Very good.
Oh, thank you. I practiced it many times. With the mission of producing plays that, one, address global problems; two, reexamine historical narratives; three, incorporate women's perspectives; and four, explore the human condition across cultures. Ex-Pats Theater is a recipient of our Projects, Events, and Festivals grant for FY23. Please join me in welcoming Ex-Pats Theater Karen and Daryl West. Welcome. Are you here? Can you hear us? Can anyone hear us?
We can hear.
Okay. Karen, are you with us? Karen? We can't hear you. We can see you now, but we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Now we can hear you. Good, thank you. Welcome.
Okay, thank you so much. All right. So I'm Karin Rosnitzek, the Artistic Director and founding of Ex-Pats Theater. Thank you for the introduction already. I just think I say it again. We're happy to celebrate Women's History Month and World Theater Day with you. And I want to thank the Commission on the Arts and Humanities for its support of our theater, which is very young. And I launched it, as you said, in 2019. And in 2020, we had a play just opened called Einstein's Wife, and we had to shut down during the pandemic. And CHA funding helped us survive the difficult times of COVID. So I don't think.
Hello?
Do you guys lose?
I think we've lost.
Yeah, I think she's frozen.
Yeah, we can't hear her.
Yeah, same.
But they're saying they can't hear us.
Oh, interesting. Karen, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay. It's the room that's out. Okay, the conference room.
Yeah, it seems like they're going in and out.
Yeah.
Can you hear us now?
Now we can, but you just came back on.
Yes, we can hear you also. My apologies.
And now we can hear Karen.
Karen?
Now she's frozen.
Yeah.
Can I reach her otherwise and have just a call in and speak without being on screen?
Yeah, she has this option.
Do we have the contact number for her? What are we doing? Perhaps I could go to public. Karen? Can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Now we can hear you.
Oh, shall I just?
We'll try again.
I'm sorry. Okay, all right. I'm just going on. And yeah. So the audience service, we're doing audience service at the end of the run, and nearly 90% of our attendees say that they would recommend our shows to their friends, which is a good turnout. Our niche is really to look at international themes, global themes, mostly international playwrights, contemporary playwrights, not the big iconic ones that everybody knows, but the ones that, you know, one may discover. And our themes always have a women's angle or should have a women's angle. Generally, I think our good motto for us is that we are a small theater that grapples with big ideas. The big ideas, you can see it in the title of the next show. Our next show is called "The Body of a Woman as a Battlefield" by a Romanian-French author named Matei Visniac. And that play deals with two women and how they handle the trauma of sexual violence during the 1990s Bosnian War. It opens April 28 at Atlas Performing Arts Center, and we invite you, any of you who wish to attend, to join us then. The play, even though it is in the 90s, is also, of course, a silent pointer and vivid reminder of how badly the women has been treating and still is treating the women in Ukraine. But even though that's the center of the news, that's just as well true for Syria, Iraq, Afghanistan, and many other places in the world. In the fall, we plan another play that deals with women and war, and that is called Scorched by a Quebecois Lebanese author. It deals with a woman looking for her lost child during the Lebanese Civil War and the devastation of that war on women and families. In our shows, we've also worked a lot in partnerships with organizations, embassies, and also a lot of D.C. organizations, local nonprofits, in various talkbacks. You know, for this play, it's going to be Women for Women International and some other organizations that take care. We are advocates of women and also advocates of women that are survivors of sexual violence. And the themes are quite heavy, but that's how the world is. And let me close in saying that I think we have a great future ahead because, you know, with your help, with the help of the D.C. community, we're very optimistic about our future, and we plan to expand our impact and engagement with the D.C. community. If anyone would like to have more information, you can check at our webpage, expatstheater.com, and theater is with an R-E. Thank you again for all your support for Ex-Pats Theater and the opportunity to address the commission. Thank you very much.
I think we lost Karen. But, oh, there you are. So did you get to finish, Karen?
Yes, she did.
Good, good. Well, despite the technology problems, what you shared with us was really impressive. It's amazing work, and we're delighted to support the work you're doing and to continue to support it as well. So we thank you for sharing that with us today. Tonight, we have several speakers scheduled. I'm sorry.
Did you hear me?
I think we're at the end of it. Did you hear my summary at the end?
Thank you so much.
No, thank you. Thank you.
I think I'm going to log out now, right?
Yes. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. So we have several speakers scheduled to give public comments. Speakers, when I call your name, you'll have three minutes for your comments, at which point I may have to play timekeeper and ask you to summarize in the interest of time. First, Patrick Smith. Okay, let's try Andre Maslin from Dance Place.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, fantastic. Good evening and happy first day of spring to the commission. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you this evening. DCCAH and Dance Place have partnered for many years to engage artists, audiences, and students that have been systemically been excluded from the field of dance. With the support of the Out of School Program Team, Dance Place provides the Energizers Creative Arts Programs to promote self-development and creativity of youth through classes, life skills, social, emotional learning, and job development. An important aspect of the program is preserving the legacy of families through a longstanding relationship, generation after generation, in particular prioritizing students who attend school on A Street and families who were displaced from the Brooklyn-Edgewood neighborhood. With your support, last year, we mentored 18 interns to provide direct experience in arts administration, operated the Energizers Program for 101 children and teenagers, providing virtual life skills, workshops, dance and arts instructions, and job training and mentorship, and hosted 71 children and teenagers at our free six-week Creative Arts Camp. With the support of DCCAH Field Trip Program, we introduced thousands of youth to dance each year through our Field Trips Program, where we bring professional dance companies to the schools for performances and classes, and bring students to our Dance Place campus. Last year, with your support, we provided over 1,500 D.C. schoolchildren with direct access to the performances with field trip performances, partnering with schools in every ward in D.C., awarded over $90,000 in scholarships to youth and their families, educated 573 children through 65 different dance classes, and provided over 200 dance classes to about 750 students at their schools. The Facilities and Buildings Grant Program has enabled us to continue to provide safe spaces for dance artists at different stages of their career to create and perform in a safe and supported environment. With this support, we're able to maintain and update our equipment to meet the changing needs of artists and to expand our abilities to support artists of differing physical abilities. And the general operating support that you provide allows us to continue to present performances in a variety of dance genres by local and non-local artists and companies in our theater, online, and in locations throughout the D.C. metro area. We are able to serve our city and arts community therein through inclusive ticketing options, including reduced-price tickets and scholarships. We're so appreciative of your support during the pandemic and the ongoing impact it has had in our theaters. The financial support you provided enabled us to continue to pay our staff and artists, to maintain our facilities, and to serve our community in new and exciting ways. As we look forward, we want you to know how important all of your programs are to our communities and our youth. And we thank you for being a partner with Dance Place. And I didn't say at the top, my name is Andre Maslin. I'm the Executive Director of Dance Place. Thank you.
Great. Great, well, thank you very much. You can imagine it's hard-wringing for us to hear how our work has impacted you and the relationship we have with you. So you keep doing the hard work, and we will support it.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. Marjorie Goldberg with the Zenith Community Arts Foundation. Marjorie?
She didn't check in either.
Has Patrick Smith joined us?
No one by the name of that.
And Marjorie's not here?
Don't see her.
Okay, good. We will go on to the Executive Directors to report, and our interim Executive Director, David Markey, will give us that Director's Report.
Thanks, Reggie. My name is David Markey. I am a white male with gray hair, and I am wearing a burgundy jacket and pink and white shirt. Quick update on our grant processes for the year. We continue to move the paperwork through the system. I cannot express my deep gratitude for the grants, public art, and finance teams for helping make this possible. There are challenges, and sometimes I feel that they're like MacGyvers working through the system. So just a big, big thanks to ensuring that our grantees receive their funds. Brian will provide more details in his financial report, but we've established purchase orders for well over 95% of our close to 900 grantees so far this year. We also, and again, thanks to the folks in the grants and finance teams, we also managed to engage in a workaround process for some of those new grantees who were stuck in the procurement process or the vendor process. And so we were able to issue direct vouchers to those, which, again, has contributed to, you know, the high number of purchase orders and payments to date. A couple of quick updates on current grant programs. In January, I mentioned the Facilities and Buildings Relief Grant. It's in its third year. Because this is considered to be a relief or emergency grant, we have the ability to move the process along more quickly than our traditional grants. We had 130 applicants, and we anticipate being able to award 124 of those applications. We have about $1.4 million to use for that program. A new program this year is the Commemorative Works Technical Assistance Program out of the Public Art Department. And up to four selected district-based artists or artist teams experienced in designing and fabricating large-scale outdoor public art, commemorations, memorials, and public engagement will be a part of a collaborative concept design team that will provide design services to district communities, Main Street organizations, and/or other groups to support the development of four commemorative work projects in words five, four, five, seven, and eight. And the application deadline for this program is extended through today, and I think we have about 23 drafting applications. And then finally, looking forward to FY24. The last time we met, the General Operating Support Grant is still open. That closed on February 21st. We have a small increase in the total number of applicants this year. We had 162 last year. We have 173 for this cycle. We have also, the grants team is about to have a very busy April with three weeks of grants panels, a total of 10 panels this year. And so they're busy vetting applications and putting panelists in place. Some updates on programming. The Business of the Arts Workshop Series is about to launch. For those of you who are not familiar with the program, it's a series of moderated workshops and panels offered by CAH to the community of individual artists, humanities practitioners, and organizational members with the goal of building their understanding and skills across a wide range of subject areas. Our colleagues Camille Ashford and Melvin Witten are coordinating the series in collaboration with the various programming teams at CAH. And as I said, the engagement is planned for April through June and July. We have a series of exciting online and in-person opportunities in the works with the goal of engaging the community in learning opportunities provided by CAH and other industry experts. And more details on those offerings will come in the coming weeks. The Words on Fire Festival happened or took place early in March, and it took place at the Theater of the Arts at the University of the District of Columbia. And we had, this festival took place back in 2015 and 2016, so it was nice to return to a familiar venue. Both days consisted of wonderful student and teaching artist performances of existing and original work, and then a prompt to dance participation workout with our very own grant specialist, Marcia Howard. The winner of the Potri Aloud Competition this year was Warwick Lloyd from St. Anselm's Abbey, and he will represent the district in the national finals here in D.C. between May 8th and May 10th. The Grantee Application Assistance Program is a new program that was created in an effort to reach deep into our community and beyond, connecting to communities that may not be familiar with CAH and its opportunities. We've met with a cohort of artists and humanities practitioners, and they will go out into the community in the coming weeks to help orient new applicants to our grant opportunities and assist them in navigating compliance requirements and the grantee application portal. There are 10 to 12 artists who were signed up to participate and were currently, again, our colleagues Camille Ashford and Melvin Witten are currently confirming locations, dates, and times for engagement. One of the wonderful responses to this new program from the artists is their desire to give back to the community. And all of them uniformly just thought it was a wonderful, wonderful idea and a wonderful way for them to pay it forward, as it were. And we plan to roll the program out in early April and have it run through the early weeks of the May launch of our Fellowship and Project Face Grants.
Can I just punctuate this? This is us going into the community, working with people who need help in the grant process. It's something that certainly came out of the work of the Task Force in Economic Inclusion and Belonging, and I'm just delighted that we are engaged in this way and getting artists who understand that context to participate in the program as well. So all of these are important points, but I just wanted to punctuate this. Thank you, Dennis.
You know, we continue, our processes in both grants and programs continue to be iterative. I don't want to steal Terrell and Gretchen's thunder on the evolution of the Arts and Humanities Fellowship Grant, but we, as an agency, have continued to make a firm and strong commitment to this particular grant program. In the last two years, we've increased the budget by 50%. And for this current year, we're providing a total of $3.1 million to 421 artists resident in the District of Columbia. As I said, Gretchen and Terrell will probably share more about the work they've been doing with other colleagues in the department and sharing out some exciting changes that are relevant to the current world in which we live. And then finally, some quick organizational and staffing updates. You know, we're really committed to ensuring that the agency is a welcoming and inclusive place for staff members to work purposefully and collectively towards CAH's mission to serve its community. In terms of professional development, we had some engagement with an organizational development consultant, Shereen Williams, back in December, and we are moving that forward to look at next steps and what we might do in the space of building a positive and purposeful culture at the agency. We have some new hires and hiring updates. I'd like to welcome another David, David Martinez.
David, yeah.
I know, exactly, yes. We've been debating how we should name ourselves. David Martinez is the latest addition to the agency and a very welcome addition. He joins the Legal Department as our new General Counsel. He comes to us from another independent agency. We are already mining his knowledge to help inform our own processes and procedures at CAH. And I would like to take a moment to give a very special thanks to our colleague, Attorney Advisor Robin Carmaccor. She has served in the role of interim General Counsel with great integrity and dedication, and she's been a really great asset to me personally in my own time as an interim.
So thank you, Robin, and welcome, David.
And some other process updates around hiring. Hector will be glad to know this. We recently completed initial interviews for a new arts learning coordinator and hope to have a candidate selected by early April. We're also reimagining our work in the area of outreach and engagement. And our colleague, Melvin Witten, who's here with us this evening, his role as Legislative Affairs Specialist has morphed into that of Community Development Specialist. And the core focus of this new role will be to develop new relationships and engagement opportunities with organizations and individuals not currently in our fold. A second partnering outreach role, Community Engagement Specialist, with a focus on internal community engagement is also in the works.
So thank you, Mel.
And then last, but definitely not least, to echo Reggie's welcome of Erin. He should be joining the agency officially next week after his confirmation hearing on March 30th. We've all had the opportunity to meet with him, to engage with him, and are really excited about his addition to the team and the great leader I think he'll be for all of us. We're committed to onboarding him as smoothly and as comprehensively as possible so he's able to begin to learn the breadth and depth of what it is we do. And then finally, as I'm transitioning out of the role. And then finally, as I'm transitioning out of the role, it's often in times of transition that the metal of character shines through. And I would really like to take the opportunity of thanking all of my colleagues at the agency for their support of me in the interim role over the last eight months. Thank you all, and that was the end of the report.
Thank you. Thank you. So again, welcome to Aaron. And some of us want to especially welcome another Texan, Interoffo.
Yes, sir.
But huge thanks to David for taking on this position for such a long time, long in the field of life, I guess. But thank you, thank you. So please join me. So with that, we will move on to the finance update. Kimber and Brian?
Brian. Hi, everybody. Hopefully, everyone can hear me okay. I am, I would echo that just in appreciation, David, for the work that you've done and my enthusiasm for welcoming Aaron to the commission. So welcome, welcome. Everybody has their Finance Committee report in the packet. I'm just going to give a couple of highlights and then turn it over to Brian to fill in any other critical details. There it is up on the screen. I think I always like to point out just sort of collectively where we are from a total budget standpoint, right? We've got a $45 million total budget. And of that, 19% sort of on the admin side, at 81% of our budget being allocated out to the grants across the district, which I think is always just an important point to highlight. I think the most important, David shared a little bit of this, right, in terms of those 900 total grants and how many are actually out. So this was a big conversation in our last meeting. 95% have a purchase order in the system. And of that, you know, we've got 81% of those grants have established with an initial payment. So of that total, if you're on the next page, if we go to the next one on the total sort of grants breakdowns, I know this has been a big question for a lot of commissioners and certainly the community. We flip to the next page, sort of overall on grants of the 37 million of those total grants. Actually, the next one, I think you've got about 14 million that are already out. Some of those, I think, lag in terms of how much dollars are out. But I think this big one around the POs entered, I think, is a big movement from the last time we were all together. Brian, you want to add any additional detail on that?
Well, I'd like, if I can, to go to everyone. I'd like to just go back to, well, let me go ahead and follow up on your comments about the actual grants. Yes, we have paid out 699 payments to date. And that represents 81% of the 854 grants that have been fully executed. And what we plan to do at this particular point, this is a report as of March 17th. So there may be more invoices that are in the pipeline as we speak. The quicker we can receive the invoices via the direct, I mean via the invoicing portal, the quicker we can process those payments. I think I can pretty much stop there for a second to entertain any questions as it pertains to any particular program. Because we are at 95% or the equivalent of only 46 grants that are left of the initial 900 to be executed. The grant program has been working with us diligently to get these last few grant agreements across the finish line. But if anyone has any questions with regards to which payments or not, excuse me, which payments, but if there's any questions regarding the process itself or anything in the report, I'd be happy to answer.
I would just say it's important for the public to understand what we're doing to try to get their money to them. And for our commissioners, who probably, like myself, are approached on the street by people asking those questions. So this flow of information is really important, this transparency is important. And while we're not proud of the fact that there was a glitch in the system and that people didn't get money when they expected and that sort of stuff, I am thankful to the staff and the effort that it took to accelerate this thing, to be innovative in how could we still, within the bureaucracy, somehow get our grantees their money in as timely a fashion as we possibly could. So we hope not to have to do that, but, and we're proud of the fact that we had to do it. But I'm very thankful to the staff for the effort they must have had to go through to get. I've come into the office a couple of times and I see the people at the conference table and they're doing all this stuff. So I know that we did all we could once that glitch happened to unglitch it. And I thank you all for that.
And if I could just add real quick, Reggie, echo those sentiments. I want to especially give a quick word of kudos to the Office of the Chief Financial Officer for pivoting and allowing us to enter the direct payment request as kind of a way to expedite some of the payments to get to our grantees. They were certainly a partner in this process to help us. They each stepped away helping Mr. Marky in terms of getting us through this process. And the other thing is, it's very important to, I mean, to tell you guys about is the 759 purchase orders that one particular person, that person, Ms. Kia King, has done by herself. And so with that being said, that's all I have about the grants. But if there's any questions, again, I'll stop right there for a second. Otherwise, I'll go back to the overall budget for a moment.
Any questions on the line? Proceed.
Patrick, if I can get you to go back to slide number one. Okay, yes, on the screen right now, as Kimber stated, is the overall budget. We allocate, we start the year with a plan of 81% of the total grants budget or $37 million. And of the 37 million, we have $4.6 million either to obligate or to issue a new grant. The admin budget is an area in which we're now shifting a bunch of our focus on, where we have a bunch of contractual initiatives that we're looking to go through the Office of Contract and Procurement to establish as well. In the next month or so, Mr. Marky or at this particular time, it'll be Mr. Myers and I will begin the process of reviewing the entire budget for any cost savings anywhere where we can better utilize the funding. We'll do an analysis and figure out what the next steps are. Again, if there's any questions with regards to any section of the budget, I'd be happy to answer. The administrative budget right now shows a 66% availability, whereas the grants budget, because of the amount that we obligate upfront, is only showing 13% available.
I'm sure no one understands that, but continue.
Okay, so what I mean by obligating is the actual, the total budget itself. The 4.6% of the grants budget, $4.6 million of the grants budget is the funding that we have yet to award in grants. The $5.6 million of the $8.4 million in the administrative budget represents funding that we have yet to encumber or obligate in a purchase order or in new hires. I hope that clarifies everything.
Probably doesn't, but that's all right. Finance people speak a language that no one else understands. As long as we're giving the money out to people in a timely fashion, that's good.
Well, as it pertains to money getting out to the people, I think we've done quite a job with $14.8 million. And one of the things that's on that report as well is that $14.8 million represents the entire portfolio. But there are some grants that have, that receive multiple payments. And so, for example, the GOS grant. Any grant that's generally over $15,000 is dispersed in two payments or more. So that's just giving proper context to where we are. The second payments are generally due March or April after the interim reports. And so that number will grow again exponentially.
So I guess for me, the bottom line is there's several steps between when a grantee applies, they are awarded the money, and when they eventually get their money, the many steps we have to go through. And so it's probably not as interesting to a grantee that we are obligated at this stage. When do they get their money? But I know that we are focused on getting through that process so that people actually get their money in their hands. And I think that's most important. But you know, purchase order is done and obligated. That's language that's not necessarily understood by a layman. It means something to you. But I know that at the end of the day, we're just trying to get the money to people. And that's what's most important.
Yes, sir.
Questions, comments? Anything else, Kimber?
Nope, I think that's it. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Kimber. Thank you, the many people in finance that helped us get to this point, even though we had the glitch in the system, not caused by us, but we had to deal with it. So thank you. So Gretchen, here we go to the Grants Committee.
Hello, everyone. And I just want to ditto that big thank you to the finance team. It was a fabulous job you did. I know it was a lot of stress. A lot of people had to get together as a team to make it happen, and you did. So again, thank you very much. Really appreciate it. I'm going to give you a little bit of background, and then we have a vote coming up. The Spring and Summer Grant Cycle. There we go. The Grant Cycle is set to open May 2023 and close in June. We will have the Arts and Humanities Education Project Grant, the Arts and Humanities Fellowship Program Grant, Field Trip Experiences Grand Program, and Projects Advanced Festivals Project Grant. They will all open in May and close in June. This is on the website, so please make sure if anyone asks you about it that you refer them to the website to get the exact dates. But right now, you can at least say that they start in May. Grants that are set to open in June and close in July are Facilities and Buildings Grant Program, the East Arts Grant Program, and Liftoff. That's just an update on the ones that are upcoming grants programs. What we want to get your vote on today, and this is something that the Grants Committee met on last week, and we are recommending this, and that's to redesign the Arts and Humanities Fellowship Program. We talked about this many times, especially in the Grants Revamp meeting. And we want to redesign it so it funds all eligible artists with a flat rate instead of a tiered funding system. In line with national trends, which we've looked at extensively to individual artists' funding, the Fellowship Program can be restructured to provide more artist support for their work. This will allow some more equitable funding models that supports artists of variabilities and experience and allows CAH to respond to the current needs and preferences of how artists present their work. Very good. Carrie, are you available to take us through this? And can you put me on the screen before you put Carrie on?
Please see you. You're on the screen for last.
I want to be bigger.
Oh, good. Yeah, I want to be bigger.
There you go. Okay, can everybody see this sign?
Oh, what does it say?
It says, "Happy Birthday, Carrie."
We'll sing for you at the end of this.
That's as good as I could do with this, you know, promoting piece. But now we can put Carrie's presentation on. But I wanted everybody to acknowledge that it is her birthday and say happy birthday to her.
All right. So, next one down, Patrick. Hi, everyone. By the way, I'm Carrie. I'm a white woman with dark hair, brain, and a red shirt. And I'll be telling you about this. So the Arts and Humanities Fellowship Program has been offering up to $12,500 to Arts and Humanities practitioners who significantly contribute to the District of Columbia as a world-class cultural capital. That has been the goal of the program, and it will continue to be the goal of the program. Historically, our awards have been made on a tiered model with a minimum award set and a maximum award set. This has, in FY '23, we funded, as we all know, 421 applicants out of the 597 total applicants. So about 70% of our applicants were awarded. The Fellowship is not a project-based grant. Applicants are not required to complete a particular project as part of their Fellowship or proposed in a special program. The funding is for most types of expenses. It is not needs-based. It is just to support your life and work as an artist. Next slide.
Bravo.
So what we have done is, as Gretchen has mentioned, we did a deep dive into our funding guidelines, comparable trends and other grant programs, and where the national trends and artist funding are headed. We also conducted some community feedback sessions, including a survey that went out to all applicants for the last three years. We kept it open for 30 days and asked a couple of things about our application process, the types of support that our artists need, what are some of the biggest barriers that people are facing right now in their work, and general feedback. We do also collect feedback annually through our reports, which were also looked at as part of this. We also held some public listening sessions where we went over in a short presentation potential changes and then opened it up for discussion with our community. Go to the next slide. So what we learned from all of this was funding is still a high priority. But the reaction to shifting to a funding model that supports more people was generally positive. We had no strong objections to flattening the funding from the tiered model to everybody gets a similar amount. There was support for reaching more artists, and most people saw the equity value in shifting to this funding model. We also heard from our artists pretty clearly some additional needs, looking for networking and fellowshipping opportunities or fellowshipping the fellowship, and spaces to develop their work and also spaces to present work. So from that, to the next slide.
Before you go on, this is such an important page. And it's important that it came from feedback from our community. It wasn't just us sitting in a room making it up. It came from a reputable number of people and aligns with the findings from the Task Force some two years before and aligns with the conversations at least I hear out of the community. And I know Hector's over there almost jumping up and down. So again, I applaud you all for having an open mind to the world has changed. Things are different. We need to think about how can we still meet their needs, perhaps in a different way. So these findings I find very important and I'm very thankful for your approach to this.
All right. So what we have as proposed changes as a result is we flattened the award so that all the applicants, all the eligible applicants would receive the same award amount. And we would be restructuring our criteria to be focused on, be mystifying what that eligibility is, and really focusing on getting panelist feedback for all of our applicants. Gathering and compiling that feedback and delivering it back to the applicants has been something that's been really valuable and has been valued by the community. And we'd really like to continue to focus our efforts on getting that feedback out. Next slide. So this is a brief overview of the eligibility. There are no significant changes to what we have offered in the past or have asked for in the past. So it is DC residency for at least one year prior to the submission deadline, be an adult aged 18 or older, not be enrolled in a program, in an educational program at the time, full-time, be an artist, arts professional, and/or humanities practitioner, be in good standing with CAH. This is a lot of it related to our reporting requirements. And then clean hands. So obtain the certification of clean hands. We need that by the time of award, but payment plans and other considerations are allowed. As always, talk to your grant manager. Next slide. So this is a little bit about the paneling process. We would still have our applicants self-selecting into artistic discipline for review as they have done historically. We would be maintaining our 10 Arts and Humanities disciplines that we have had for the last few years. And all applicants would go to panel as they have done in prior years. We have a second round of paneling proposed where if applicants score below a 20th percentile in an adjusted score, then we would send you to a second round of panel review to get additional feedback and potentially be removed from funding consideration. This is not limited to any artistic discipline. We would recruit panelists who would be new to the process but also returning for a second time during the cycle and really focusing on eligibility and feedback in this. This is to get us second eyes and additional feedback for applicants. Next slide. Next slide. And then some additional changes to the program. We would be formalizing a community development and engagement segment of the Fellowship. So working on collaborating with the business of the arts team and the CAH community team, developing professional development options for our artists and our fellows. So some of those topics that came up in the feedback sessions and in reports and in other places have been things like networking, meet and greet events, where we can all actually see each other face to face, which would be great, tax planning and financial, oh, excuse me, financial management for artists, social media marketing, and event planning or connecting with producers and other ways to get your work out there. And then just a rough timeline. We would open the grant in May. We would have several extra workshops to help introduce these revised guidelines, getting the message out to as many people as we can, and as always, recruiting panelists. And then in June, we would close the application. Internally, we would review for eligibility and completion and then send it out to our panelists, our wonderful panelists, for review. And I think that's it. It is.
Well, I'm very excited over.
I'm very excited. Any questions?
Hector, do you want to?
Just merely on the criteria and also the focus, how are we going to be dealing with the issue of helping the artists present their work? You know, I, for one, reside just about three or four blocks from here, and I go through a very painful experience when I see our gallery, which is phenomenal, empty or dark. I would really encourage us to use our resources to open them up to the artist community that we are now expanding this particular program because they said they need help with this. And finding other sources, there's a lot of empty real estate to work with the community, the builder community in the district, to facilitate, you know, pop-up exhibits that we can make available to our artists. But I have to say, I am really so proud, so happy to see the result of this particular grant passage that I think is very much what we're all about here. And thank you, thank you, thank you for that great work, because I know it's been tremendous.
Amen.
Thank you, Hector.
Other comments, questions? So back to you, Gretchen.
Okay, thank you, everyone. And now I'd like to call for a vote. It resolved that the commission agrees to the committee's recommendation, the grants committee, to fund all eligible applicants for FY 2024 Arts and Humanities Fellowship Program Grant with a flat rate instead of a tiered funding system.
Good. So I will go to the vote, individual vote. A, if you're in favor, and no if you're not, or no vote if you want to abstain. Stacy, Lauren knows not here. Cora? Maggie? Quanise?
Hi, did you call my name?
Yes, Cora. All right, thank you. Quanise?
Yes. Am I supposed to be voting?
Yes.
Yeah, I said vote, yeah.
Good. Quanise?
Yeah.
Natalie?
Yes.
Kimber?
Yes.
Mariah's not here. Carla?
Mariah's here, and I see you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mariah, welcome. Yeah, sorry about that. Mariah?
Thank you, no worries.
Is that a yes?
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you. Carla?
Yes.
Hector?
Yes.
Gretchen?
Yes.
And a yes for me? It carries, thank you. Thank you very much. Anything else from the grants committee?
Nope, that's it. Thank you very much.
Great. So we will go to public art, and I think Maggie has left. So I think you're the show, Lauren.
Okay. All right, thank you. Well, public art is moving along. There's a lot of activity, lots of grants happening, and I want to call everyone's attention to the second part of our two-part series showcasing the inaugural installation of the Art Bank Loan Program at the Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial Library. And that will be this Saturday. It's called Opening Channels of Cultural Communication: Stories from the Art Bank. It's going to feature the works of Sam Gillian, who was actually our very first acquisition into this program, Julia Bloom, Jean Davis, Eileen Kellogg, and Marcel Taylor. The program will be moderated by Melanie Harvey, who's Associate Professor of Art History at the Department of Art in the Chadwick A. Bozeman College of Fine Arts at Howard University. It feels so good to say that. I love, I just love saying that. I'm sorry, I do digress. For those artists who are no longer with us, we have special people who will be talking about their contribution to the art scene in DC. And that will include Jonathan Binstock, who's the brand-new Brandenburg Director and CEO at the Phillips Collection and actually did a dissertation on Sam Gillian's work. And then Jean Lala Cohen, who is a curator, arts writer, and a friend of Jean Davis. The other thing that is, that actually happened recently, over the last couple of weeks, is the unfortunate passing of Lou Stovall, but as a master printer. And actually, he printed the work by Jean Davis that is at the library. So, you know, his impression, and we have many of his works in our collection. So it's just, it's a, it's a very unique artist community in DC, and we're so happy to share this and welcome everybody to learn more about it on, on Saturday. Now, this panel is being held in conjunction with the DC History Conference. It's the 49th Annual DC History Conference, and it's open to the public. So whether you come for the whole DC History Conference or you just want to come for this program, we do encourage everybody to show up. And the information has been pushed out to all the commissioners and to everyone on our, on our, on our email mailing list. So we hope that you will be able to join us. Another interesting thing that's happening as we approach Earth Day, we have a Public Art Building Communities grantee who's working on a found object sculpture project, which will be revealed on Earth Day, April 22nd. In preparation for that, he's doing a series of public workshops, one of which was held this past Saturday. There will be another one on Saturday, the sub cup coming Saturday, and in March 8th. And the public is invited to attend. It's going to be at the Olivia Tanner Park in Eckington. And at the end of these workshops, everyone's going to be bringing their found objects, and there will be sculptures built on Earth Day in reflection of environmental protection, understanding what's in our, our nature and all the found objects and trash that we see in the community that, that.
Not trash, treasures.
Treasures. Someone's trash, someone's treasures. But there are safe ways to dispose of these things. So again, that will be a major exhibition on Earth Day, April 22nd. And then there will be two other showings on April 29th and May 6th. So over the coming weeks, there will be more projects from the Public Art Building Communities grants as those projects begin to be installed and erected and celebrated. And we're just excited and moving forward.
Great. Questions, comments?
Are there any questions? Oh, and the Co. of the Curb program will be unveiled on Bike to School Day in early May. And those artists are busy getting connected with their schools and with the students in those schools to create wonderful designs for their communities and help with road safety, pedestrian, and vehicle as well.
Fantastic. Well, I'm excited because I have both Sam Gillian and Lou Stovall in my collection myself. So this is great. Questions from the phone? Questions, comments?
I have a question. I have both those in my collection too, Reggie, so you're not throwing one.
Of course.
Did I miss any commentary on the Berry thing? Because I know I've been invited for the first view of the first iteration of it for Wednesday. I just, you know, I'm excited about it and anxious to see what they have started. But did you mention any of that, Lauren, or did I?
No, I did not, Cora. And things are moving very well with that. I know that the artists are planning a site visit at the Berry Building later this week and working with all the various vendors who are going to be integral to having everything installed at the end of, towards the end of this year. But everything is going to be fine there.
I was, oh, thank you for that, but I was making reference to the fact that they've invited a few people to come Wednesday to see their first, I don't know what you call it, but iteration of, of the project. So that'll be our first time seeing what they're, what they're planning to do.
Okay.
Good.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, comments? Before we go to new business, I just want to reiterate something that, three things that I was most happy with this meeting. First, our ability to get the money out to the grantees in spite of the glitch in the system. Second, this revamp that we did to our grants that we talked about, that Kelly talked about. And then certainly these, these exciting public art things we're doing. So there's a lot of amazing things that we're doing here. And I want just to pause and comment on that and to recognize the staff for the great work they're doing and to challenge us to continue to do more, because the need is so great out there. And so we are one of the few people that I think have a most direct connection to artists in our community. And so keep doing the great work you're doing. So thank you. We're going to the new business, which is updates on some of the items from last month's meeting. First, the notion of the CH Foundation, an update from Jeff.
Sure. I'm Jeff Vasquez, Chief Vasquez Staff, white male, wearing a blue blazer and glasses. For those of you commissioners who were on the executive committee meeting a week or so ago, I'll share some same updates. Reggie, David, and myself met with Chairman Mendelson at the end of last month and discussed several topics, one of which was this idea of a nonprofit foundation arm for the commission. The chairman was very receptive to the idea, stated that it would probably take some legislation to get it done, and they were looking into it. So, you know, that's kind of where it is right now. I've also reached out to our colleagues at the National Assembly of State Arts Agencies to see if they have any information that they can tell us about the, the other state arts agencies that have done this and created nonprofit foundations themselves so that we can see, you know, as far as what works, what maybe doesn't work as well and, and learn from that. As you know, the budget comes out this week, and then we started the budget hearings. So that's where a lot of council's energy and focus will be. It's likely if there is, you know, legislation that comes out of this session that deals with a foundation, it might come out through the BSA. And it's something that we can perhaps bring up in our hearing next week as well.
Yeah, so our time for the budget hearing is March 30th, just to let you know. So there it goes. Questions, comments on the foundation? One thing, Jeff, we did talk to, talk about is we have sort of a rolling calendar of ideally when we'd like to get things done. Could you just reiterate that just to keep us on track?
Yeah, you know, our original plan was that we were hoping that we could like ramp through this and do it as a standalone piece of legislation before we got into the budget cycle so that it wouldn't get gunked up in that. I don't, that's probably not going to happen at this point, which, you know, puts us a couple of months later than we had. We had thought that we would get this wrapped up in the fall, but it might be a little bit later in the fall now because depending on when the BSA is finished, because we have had some years in the past where we didn't have to finish BSA until late summer.
Yeah, for those who know, the BSA is the Budget Support.
The Budget Support Act. It's the annual budget bill for the city.
So ideally now we're going to be targeting to have it, whatever God means.
I hope it's your Christmas present.
I'd appreciate that. Have a treat, please. Questions, comments on the foundation? So as you know, this is one of the two big things that I've been pushing, and we are making progress. So thank you, Jeff. And David M. A.R.T.
I'm Mark.
M.A.R.K. You will be helping us with that, I'm sure.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you. The next topic is Art Basel DC. Update, Carla? Carla, are you with us? Yes. We can't hear you, though. We see the slides. Oh, good. Now we hear you.
Okay. Sorry about that. I just want to take a minute to follow up on what we talked about last month and with the Art on Night project and Art Basel. First of all, the, the idea of the foundation feeds right into this initiative, so I'm excited that that is moving forward. I can't see the slides on the screen. They are there, you're saying?
Yes, reimagined.
Okay. So basically, Art on Night is the district's annual overnight event. This year is going to take place on September 29th through the 30th, two days, from 7:00 PM to 3:00 AM. Most people hopefully are within this call are familiar with Art on Night. And what we want to do is expand the reach and the breadth of, of it moving forward. It is currently organized, it's organized by the Development, our Department of Small and Local Businesses Development Office and with involvement from the Main Streets and the Bids and a lot of local establishments across all eight wards. One of the things, or some of the things that we've talked about doing is implementing a reimagined version of all night, Art on Night, which would include expanding the number or the amount of days for Art on, Art on Night. We would implement a strategic marketing and communications campaign which would help build awareness and broader awareness of our initiative. And then through the, through the foundation, create this marketplace where artists would be able to sell their wares. So these are some of the things that we've been talking about. And what we plan to do is in May, we will host a stakeholders meeting, which will use that as an opportunity to bring all of our key partners together, grantees, and to introduce the concept, as well as hear from Reggie. He'll kind of lay it out and then get feedback from all of those participating, because we want to make sure that we have everyone's buy-in. And when you think about what Art on Night is going to be as we envision it, you can think Art Basel times South by Southwest. It's a, it's kind of a combination of art, business, culture, presentations, activations. For 2023 and 24, we plan to kind of slow walk into, into this initiative by testing concepts, introducing concepts, initiating new grants for organizations that want to participate in this Art on Night. I am working with Lauren and Terrell and, and Melvin on this. And if they want to chime in and add anything at this point, they're more than welcome.
Comments, Lauren, Terrell?
No, I think she had all the points, so.
The, the, a couple of things I'll say is what I continue to observe about Art on Night. I had lunch today with a big arts enthusiast in Washington DC, and I asked the question, "Have you heard of Art on Night?" And he said, "No." So I'm just, I continue to be surprised that a number of people have never heard of it. And it's what, 10, 12, 14 years old? So the communication speaks that Carla talked about is really critical so that people just know it exists and engage and are coming. The other thing is the trip that many of us took to Miami in December for Art on Night, for Art Basel Miami, we were able to meet with the two most senior people there. And I'm happy to say that on March 11th, I got an email from Vincenzo, who is the head of affairs and exhibition, saying, "You want to do this? Let's, let's talk about it." So it's not just us pushing it. And in others places, when I go around the city and talk about the notion we're trying to make Art Basel to DC, there's amazing interest. People's eyes just sort of light up. They're like, "Oh, my God, would this be fantastic?" So thank you, Carla. Thank you, the team, for pushing this forward. I think it's going to be amazing to both help Art on Night be what it can be and eventually move to this Art Basel DC, which we have to name in a different way. But when I say this, people at least know who we're talking about. We may have to have a different name. Questions, comments from anyone? Good. Is there any other new business? Thank you.
Well, there's no business, but I'd like to just add, it's interesting that Carla, good job, number one. Thank you. And I had just gotten a call. We had our Blacks and Wacks Weekend over the last two or three days. And one of the people who, who appeared there, who is in charge of Art on Night, called me. who appeared there, who is in charge of Art All Night, called me maybe about four or five hours ago to ask if it's possible that we could do a production or part of a production or whatever presentation of Blacks and Wax at their next Art Out. Well, that's a twist, a twisted Art All Night. I got a call, y'all, just forgive me. So, I don't know what that looks like, but I was glad to hear you say you're going to meet with the grantees, because if that's something we're going to participate in, we know, we need to know that sooner than rather than later.
Great. Great. Other questions, comments?
Just to comment on Cora's comment, Blacks and Wax is really a fabulous event for those of you who've never seen it or not seen it. I mean, if we're going to have it at Art All Night, which we already have the date and plans for, why don't we talk to Monica, because they've got a fabulous stage setting that could be there, and there may be some other sites that could do many ones, so let's talk about it offline.
Okay, I will. Thank you for the compliment, by the way.
I was going to say, I don't want to create more work for you, Cora, and your team, but I would love to see this thing scaled and not just in one installation, one activation, but, and not in '23, that's too much. But somewhere between '1 and '23, we should try to do that Art All Night. We can do it both Friday and Saturday, so, but that, we can talk about it offline.
Yeah.
And also, just want to take this opportunity to thank Davy and Rob, what's your name, Reggie, and Khalid for showing up and coming to the event, and Terrell, thank you.
I was there, too.
And I'm sorry, Carla and you, thank you.
So, before I adjourn, after the next meeting, we are going to have this long-awaited cocktail reception, and I've talked about and talked about and talked about. It will both be a celebration of our staff, especially the hard work we've done recently getting over the hump with getting the grants, but also a special thanks to David Markin for his time in the barrel, having to work with me, which is no fun, but you know, what can I say? And a welcome to Aaron Myersville. So, we have lots to celebrate in this meeting. The next meeting will be held Monday, April 24, 2023, at 5:30 PM, followed by a reception. Thank you for your time, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, Vlad.